Hi everyone, I'm Penny Schultz, host of Oakland Leadership. Our guest today is Dave Woodward, Chairman of the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. Prior to his service to Oakland County, he was a member of the Michigan State House of Representatives. With a continued focus on advancing social and economic justice, his 20-year public service career includes leadership, roles with candidate training programs, policy advocacy, and leadership development organizations. Woodward holds a Bachelor of Science mathematics degree from Wayne State University. He and his wife Stacy are raising their family in their hometown of Royal Oak, Michigan. We are so thankful to have Commissioner Woodward with us today. I'm so glad you're here, sir.
Thank you Penny, it's my pleasure to be here, this is great.
You're a very busy man, I know you said you came straight from the Commissioners' boardroom.
Absolutely.
Tell us what was going on there?
Well, we had a meeting this morning, talking about a new potential partnership with our university, Oakland University, here in Oakland County, looking at cybersecurity and the entire manufacturing supplier pipeline. So, we're at the infancy stage of having that conversation, we had that meeting this morning and came here right after that.
That's very exciting.
Very exciting.
So Oakland University is a gem in our county.
It is, I mean, we are, you have to remember that we're very fortunate to have a higher ed learning institution like Oakland University, in addition to our community college system and all the other colleges that are here, not to mention the satellite sites. I mean, we have, Oakland County is one of the most educated counties in the entire state and that really helps drive job creation, attraction of other investment to create new jobs and we're just very fortunate to have that.
I have a student grandson that attends the university.
Fantastic.
And almost everyone I know has graduated or has students attending there and they speak very highly of the university.
My mother-in-law, I mean, when the recession hit, the No Worker Left Behind program, she got her degree at Oakland University.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Oakland University really is leading the charge of creating education opportunities at people at all stages of their career and, I mean, we're very fortunate to have that.
Well, I'm glad that you had that meeting this morning and I'm certain that good things will come from that.
Absolutely.
So what's new in the Board of Commissioners? You're brand-new to that role.
I'm brand-new to the Chairman role, I've been on the board for about 15 years now. This is the first time that, I'm a Democrat and the first time that Democrats have been in the majority in almost 40 years. But I like to usually start off by saying that we've got a long tradition here in Oakland County, Democrats and Republicans working together to get towards the common goal. The goal is to make sure that we have the best-run county in the country, to make sure that we are delivering on services for the residents and communities that make Oakland County one of the greatest counties in the entire country. And then third, we're not afraid of being bold and taking risks and being innovative and so we're going to continue to be able to do those things. We might have some disagreements in how we get there, but when you set the goal, it's aligned, we get there eventually.
Yes, and you've got a great group that you're working with there.
I, we do, I mean, our board, one of the largest boards and commissioners around the state, has 21 members and it's not, it seems like a big number maybe to your average listener, but keep in mind that Oakland County is the second-largest county in terms of population in the state, 1.2 million people. And so each of us represent, are elected from a district that makes up a proportion of that and together, we're tasked by coming together to figure out how to do these things, whether you're from a core urban area like Pontiac, our county seat, suburban area like where I'm from, or to the north or to the, I mean, and to the west where it may be more rural.
We are seeing a lot of great economic improvements in Pontiac, can we talk a little bit about that?
Sure, no, there's no question, I mean, in terms of like our toolkit from an economic development point of view, which is one of the core functions of county government, we are seeing, if you go, I mean downtown Pontiac, you see the development, the Strand Theater, the business community, new entrepreneurs opening up, our Main Street program, which we've got downtowns all across Oakland County that are part of this, that are learning from each other, trying to figure out what are the best practices that we can bring to our respective communities, what can we learn from each other to make it a vibrant community. I think, I mean, everyone wants to have access to these communities where independent small businesses can thrive and can exist in a way that drives economic opportunity that is afforded and reaches everybody, not just a few. And so I think you're seeing a renaissance that's happening in Pontiac, just like you're seeing in Detroit and a lot of other areas around the state.
It's great to see.
It is great to see.
Yeah, every time I go through Pontiac from Orion, because we're neighbors, and I see what's happening, I'm always celebrating that.
Exactly, and I guess from Oakland County's perspective, our economic development team is really tremendous. Some years back, the board actually led the effort to create the Oakland County Micro Loan Program. Again, another thing like during the, I mean, during the recession where loans became really hard, especially if you were a business, the banks were calling back those loans and small businesses were having a hard time being able to afford payroll. So we came, I mean, we came together, I mean, putting up some money that leveraged additional money from the federal government and we were able to start putting loans into local businesses so that they could grow and compete that were affordable. I'm happy to say that these loans have grown in size and the jobs created, jobs, I mean, retained during the worst of the economy are thriving and we're seeing new businesses, entrepreneurs, or small businesses that want to grow, taking advantage of those tools. And that's, I mean, that's just one example in how where, where does county government fit in the whole scheme of things? And that is one example of a program that's clearly working and we're partnering with local communities to make it a success.
That's good to see. If people want to find out more information, should they go to oakgov.com?
Oakgov.com, there's a whole menu of resources, all the departments and divisions of Oakland County are there, including the Board of Commissioners and if people want to learn more about the Oakland County Micro Loan Program or our one-stop shop, which has a whole host of tools that can help support our local businesses.
Orion is one-stop-ready.
Yes, you are.
We're pretty exciting about that.
Yes, it's very, it's very exciting, yes.
Yeah, we have a great community here and a lot of economic development, but we also take care of the rural nature of the community as well.
Right, well, it makes, it is one of those examples that makes Oakland County this great place. I mean, there, I challenge anyone to say, what does, what doesn't Oakland County have that can offer any tastes that people have? If you want to enjoy the great outdoors and nature.
The lakes.
The lakes, I mean, more lakes than any other county in this, in the state of Michigan and clearly right on the way here, winding around them to get here and, I mean, it is, it is absolute joy and, and folks that, I mean, want to live in a more densely populated area come out here to take advantage of those lakes in the summertime, the fall time, and I know people who come in the winter for ice fishing and other types of things, so it's, it's really exciting.
You'll have to bring your family out, we'd love to have you out there enjoying.
I'm out here regularly.
Good, very good. So you have your wife and your family you're raising in Royal Oak?
In Royal Oak, yeah, but I got two little girls, that seven and nine, I'm going on 17 and 19.
That's incredible how that happens.
It does, no, it's, it is, I mean, they're the best things I've ever done, my wife and I, my wife's an educator, I mean, we're, Oakland County again, also very fortunate to have some of the best schools in the state and we want to make sure that, I mean, the education that my kids are getting, my goal and I'm Chair, that it's our colleague's goal, is to make sure that all kids have the same opportunities to succeed like both of us did.
It's so important. My parents are both educators, retired now.
Retired now?
Yeah, I understand the importance of that.
It is, it is, and we need, and we need to create the mechanisms to encourage people to go into teaching, I mean, it's, we have a teacher shortage right now and, I mean, our future, I mean, what is the world that we're going to leave to our children, my future grandchildren, knock on wood? And we need to make sure that Oakland County, I mean, plays an active role in keeping not only our school, our great schools great, helping improve the ones that can help be improved and really being a leader in keeping education, public education particularly front and center.
In agreement. I have a subscription from Oakland County that is regarding internships and skilled trades, can we talk a little bit about what's going on there?
Absolutely, I mean, there's, there's no question and the state of the economy right now, if you're, I mean, I drive around, I see cranes in the air, I mean, that's a sign of economic development. People have, are confident enough to build the infrastructure that's necessary to, I mean, house the jobs of tomorrow and so, but to do that, to do that well, we need skilled trades people, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, steelworkers, roofers, painters, I mean, across the board to do that well, and there's a shortage of them. I mean, when you do the math and you see all the demand for these jobs right now, there's a shortage of them, and these are good-paying jobs that frankly are really hard to export. I challenge you to figure out how you, I mean, export the plumber.
True.
You can't export the plumber, and I mean, these are, and so, I mean, I think frankly, I mean, over time that, I mean, maybe there, I mean, I talked to folks who are really involved in the training and recruitment of the skilled trades, is that there was a stigma to this and the reality is these are people who work with their hands and make things work and our economy can't function without them. And so, I mean, Oakland County puts together a directory of all the apprenticeship programs, a board, a few years ago, we put some money aside to figure out how do we help create better pipelines from high school, I mean, if, we've got so, and we talked about Oakland University, if a four-year college education is not the path for you, maybe a skilled trade apprenticeship is. And frankly, it can lead to, equally can lead to good-paying jobs, in some cases sooner without the college debt.
That's right.
So, I mean, we add that all together, we got to make sure that those choices are available, are known and available to everybody. And so we're, I mean, I'm actively working with the trades to talk about what can we do? The trade apprenticeship programs are, I mean, they have them, I mean, we have some of the state-of-the-art learning trade schools in the, I mean, in the country, I mean, this is, I mean, it's phenomenal, what's happening, the technology that's happening at these trade schools. And I think in some cases about awareness, making sure that high school counselors are aware of them and even people who are after high school, like, I mean, these are affordable, not only affordable ways of getting a, developing a skill that, I mean, helps lead to a good-paying job, but it's things that our economy needs. And so I refuse to accept that we can't grow that talent here, I think we absolutely can and what are the, what are the pipeline infrastructure needs that Oakland County can play a role with? Our workforce development team is very much involved, our community colleges are actively involved, our skilled trade groups are actively involved, Oakland schools and the local school districts, I think, I mean, we pull all these folks together, the smartest minds are going to be able to create a really good product in the end.
So if someone wants information about this, should they contact their teacher, their guidance counselor at school?
Well, I would say if you're, I mean, if you're a parent of a high school student or a high school student yourself, yeah, absolutely, reach out to your counselors in school. If the counselors don't have that information, they know they can reach out to Oakland schools and Oakland schools will put them on there.
Fantastic.
I think, I would encourage, if, I mean, if you're not getting the answer fast enough, you reach out to your county commissioner, they're 21 of us, one of us will have the effort, will connect you to stuff that's happening with our workforce development team, the community college, the information's out there. Sometimes I realize it's also unwieldy, there's so much information, so where, where's the best place for me to put my energy in? But start, start, I mean, if you're a high school student, start with your guidance counselor and go up from there, but there, what I, in the last few years, I can definitely just atone in the conversation, a direct commitment to figuring out how do we do this well and build the pipeline for making sure that we can fill these jobs, that, we don't have enough of them right now, not taking into consideration the retirements that we know are on the horizon of those who are in those jobs today.
Yep, well, this is really great to know, our high school seniors, many of them received that publication.
Yes.
From their guidance counselor, so I know it's available and we were so thankful for that.
Yeah.
And it's spreading the word, it's getting the information out there to people.
Right, exactly, and it's, you know, for, if you don't know, it's kind of sometimes scary to pick up the phone and call, I mean, I work with this group of 21, I mean, total of us, 21, 20 other commissioners who are always looking for the opportunity to help connect people to the right information. And so use us as navigators through this wield of information, our website, oakgov.com that you mentioned already, has so much information, probably more information than any other county in the entire state and if you can't find it on your own, pick up the phone, or email us directly, we'll get the information to you.
Excellent, and we'll run that on the program as well, so people can contact you directly if they have questions and you'll get that out to where they need to go.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So what are some of the roles of a Chairman in your position?
Well, Chairman in county government, I mean, I think this, a county government, we sometimes joke around, say it's like the most best-kept secret in government, but the truth of the matter is that county government actually dates back to the 13 colonies, I mean, it's one of the earliest forms of local government that we had in this country and is basically a model across, across the country. In Michigan, there's really, really, I think, three components to it. One, you could say it's the arm of state government, where we implement state policies, so making sure that food is safe in restaurants, just an example that there's a state.
Thank you.
The state food code and counties implement, making sure that we do inspections, every restaurant that serves food and food truck, et cetera, requires a, two annual inspections and additional follow-up if necessary. And we have a very aggressive and award-winning program and we've got incredible staff that is doing this, 4,000 eateries, if you will, across Oakland County get inspected. So that's an example of being a state arm of, well, I mean, counties being a state arm of government. The running government day-to-day, so administering our justice system, our public safety system, our economic development system, our Parks and Rec system.
Roads.
All of that falls within the scope. Roads, I mean, it's an interesting thing, people assume that we're in charge of all the roads, the truth of the matter is that the Road Commission for Oakland County oversees most of the roads. However, Oakland County has partnered with the Road Commission and our local communities to come up with additional monies, because we know that fixing the roads is such a top priority for all residents and so we have actually pulled some of our resources to match with local communities to be able to help.
Tri-party funding?
The tri-party funding for townships.
Yep.
Biparty funding for cities and then working with our Road Commission to figure out how to do a lot of these things and so, but yeah, so that's kind of the administration, the running of all these things.
That works with the roads, it really does.
It's huge, absolutely, well, I mean, every dollar helps, right?
It really does.
And we know that it's a, it's a bill, money statewide, a multi-billion-dollar problem and we just got to keep chipping away at it, we got to, because this is probably the top demand that I interact with the public, I wonder are we going to fix the roads? And we've got lots of funding streams, but we work together. So counties are working with our Road Commission to be able to do this. And this last kind of prong of county government is innovation, I mean, where Oakland County's been a leader on technology, on cybersecurity.
Yes.
On economic development, on a host of things, on the board leading a lot of these things, leading a lot of new initiatives, we hear about automation alley a lot, we hear about medical Main Street, the Main Street program of all our downtown economic development tools. And so, local government is an incredible opportunity to be innovative, to practice new things, if they work really well, maybe they're scalable and we can take it statewide and nationally.
That's very exciting.
Yeah.
So you allocate funding as well?
We allocate funding, we have almost a billion-dollar annual budget.
People don't realize how big that is.
It's huge, I mean, and it's, I mean, people should also realize that it's really expensive to fully fund a sheriff department, fully fund a justice system, to fully fund a health department and all, and a drain office and a whole, I mean, all the functions of government and, which is why we really believe in transparency and making sure that people can not only see our budget, not only planned this year, but, I mean, planned out year after year after year, we have a three-year rolling budget with also a five, in some cases even 10-year forecast, just to try to be ahead of the game.
I believe that's why we're so successful, because we are forecasting.
Right, and we have, I mean, there's an ability.
You modeled that for the locals.
That's exactly right, and I think, and we're fortunate too, and we have, I mean, we are the wealthiest county in Michigan.
Yes.
So it gives us an opportunity to, and we have a very strong tax base that can help afford these things. And so, being able to plan out, I mean, long-term, we can make adjustments that will pay dividends long-term and we're not reacting to a crisis in the moment, we're able to see it out years in advance and spread the pain if pain has to happen, then we figure out how to accomplish it over a longer period of time than figuring out how are we going to pay the bills next week. And it's worked very well for us and we're going to continue doing that.
Yes, we've got a census coming up and everybody's engaging in that.
Absolutely.
What's your role or the county commissioners are, how are they?
Well, I'm glad you bring it up, this, I mean, our next coming board meeting, we're going to be forming a Complete Count Committee. And the Complete Count Committee is a model program that the US Census Bureau is encouraging local communities to form, where we bring faith leaders, the school communities, local governments, business leaders, education groups together. Rough, I mean, the biggest fear of the census is that there's some new things that are coming, this, this 2020 census, a lot of it's going to be done online and so people who don't have access or less familiar with it, that, how do we make sure that people are comfortable doing that? Make sure people understand the importance of the census, because there's literally billions of dollars of money over, over, over a decade that will be decided based on the count. Money for elder and childcare, money for healthcare.
Hospital funding.
Hospital funding, all of that is decided by the census and so, and for every person, they're estimating, for every person that's not counted, it costs our county collectively about $1,900 a year. So imagine, 1% out of 1.2 million.
Too much.
Would be, would be too much and we are all, we all, regardless of political beliefs, we all believe in everyone should be counted and so we're forming this Complete Count Committee to work with, encourage local communities to create their own Complete Count Committees and work together to coordinate with the Commerce Department, which is, I mean, top of the pyramid, if you will, that's overseeing this entire operation. And we're, we want to make sure that we get as accurate a count as possible when the census starts, almost a year from now, April 1st, 2020.
It's coming up quick.
I mean, it's hard to believe that in less than a year, it officially starts and then we'll wrap up by the summer, so.
I was involved with the 2010.
There you go.
With the complete committee.
Good, right.
It was fantastic, Complete Count.
Complete Count, yep.
Pardon me, it was fantastic, how much resource was available from Oakland County to help us educate our people.
Absolutely.
And I know that Orion is engaged again.
Absolutely.
Very happy for that.
I think it's important, our economic development team and we've got all these technology tools too. We have a general idea where groups of people that are harder to count, people who move around a lot, rental, rental communities, more rural areas, and so we want to make sure that the resources are allocated in a way to make sure that we get that complete count so that everyone's counted and frankly, in the end, Oakland County and our local communities get their fair share.
I want to give a little bit of a shout-out to your equalization department, Oakland County Equalization, they really helped us get ready with the correct baseline maps. They made sure everyone had an address.
Absolutely.
And that's so important when the census is sending out information and asking people to respond.
Dave Huber is amazing.
Incredible.
I mean, his, I mean, his entire team is incredible and what's amazing is like, so from a national level, like the Census Bureau will basically give information, like, we think that this census tract in your county is at risk of being undercounted based on the number of people we know live there and who returned the surveys and so sometimes their information is outdated and ours is up-to-date and so being able to align those things makes it so much easier. I mean, it's, I mean, it pretty, I mean, you think about it, it's a pretty awesome exercise, every 10 years from the beginning of our country, we've been doing this and we have now more technology than ever before, but still there are basic barriers, there's trust of the system, I mean, it's confidential, so this stuff is not going to be shared with the IRS or the other types of things, I mean, this is like enshrined in law, enshrined in the Constitution.
Yes.
And we need to do this, because it helps, I mean, it helps communities plan, it helps communities be able to afford the core services that we, we know the public wants us to be able to pay for and it's a, I mean, it really is also a community experience, which is why it's so important to bring groups together from the faith community, the business community, the education community, the local government community and others who are committed to making sure that we get the most accurate count possible.
I like that, I'm glad that we touched on that.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
So anything else that we haven't covered that you want to make sure we get out there to the people?
Oh, yeah, I mean, like, it, so I've been the Chairman, starting in January, so I kind of like just rounded out the first quarter and I'm, I'm happy to report, we've really accomplished some amazing things. One thing I guess I'd like to bring attention, we launched last month the Oakland County Better With Breakfast Initiative. Oakland County is the first county in Michigan that is launching a universal breakfast program for thousands and thousands of students.
That's beautiful.
We know that there are too many kids coming to school hungry, we know that it's hard to learn if you're hungry and we also know how to fix the problem. And so knowing all of that, we came together and partnered with Oakland Schools and the United Way for Southeastern Michigan and developed a model program and secured the funding to ensure that thousands of more students are going to be able to have access to breakfast.
Thank you.
I mean, literally, kids walk in the door, grab breakfast, go. There's no poor line or rich line, there's no stigma, everyone eats and we're looking forward to better positive student performance. I was talking to the superintendent of Oakland Schools and she penned this great op-ed that says, "You want to improve public education, start with breakfast. You want a better day, eat breakfast."
Agreed.
And.
And making it available to everyone.
Making it available.
Without feeling that you're in this line that's different from another.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, well, what's great about it is that, I mean, our analysis is that, I mean, we're making a modest investment in the front end, but it's going to translate into, I mean, full implementation, more than a million dollars in increased federal reimbursement coming back to the same schools. And so, it's a, it's a win-win across the board and I'm really excited and we came together in a broad bipartisan way to be able to do this. And I think that's just, it's one of those examples on how Oakland County can be a leader. We said earlier, we're one of the wealthiest counties in the country and wealthiest in Michigan, if we can't do it here, it can't be done.
And kids shouldn't be hungry in school.
Right, kids should never be hungry in school.
Is this through all grades?
It would be, it's based on school building, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be, I mean, across the board.
Good.
We are, the, the schools that are targeted for this, this round are school buildings with a 40% or greater free and reduced population. And then my hope, people ask me like, "Well, do you want to go down to zero?" I'm like, "Yes." I mean, we've got to work within a budget, but as we make progress, it allows us to be able to go deeper and, I mean, and cover more and more school buildings. So I'm just super excited and.
How can we learn more about this?
Our website, we got a dedicated page on the Board of Commissioners' website about it and when we, last month, we, I mean, did like the formal press rollout of it and, and you'll be able, online, you'll be able to see all the school buildings that are, are targeted for this. And I think, I mean, viewers might think, they would think of certain areas and they think this is where this program is going to be.
It's happening for everyone.
It's everywhere, I mean, there are kids that are struggling with food insecurity everywhere and even some of the most wealthiest areas and so.
We have blessings in a backpack and there's a lot of kids.
I just went to a fundraiser for one over the weekend and it's, yeah, you're absolutely, it, food insecurity and this is something that Commissioner Gindel, myself, have talked about, that, I mean, we have plenty of food, plenty of food.
We do.
And there's no, we can take on hunger, we have distribution problems and getting the food to the right people and ability for people to access it. And so, this is just one example in how we're able to do that, but I'm, I'm really excited and I kind of, just spoiler alert that we're already talking to the state and hopefully the state's, I mean, open to helping provide additional funding and taking this statewide. I think it's going to be one of those examples in which we model it here and we scale it up statewide. One other thing I guess I'd love to talk about is, once we're wrapping up this year, is our Safe School Drinking Water Initiative. And in the wake of the Flint water crisis, a lot of concern about the safety of our water, which remains a priority for our board, what can we do? The state law does not require schools to test for water every single year and, and I hope one day they will, but it is very costly and the test only is good for that moment, you have to do it every year and so it's very expensive. And so, Dr. Mona Hannah Atisha, who was the whistleblower of the Flint water crisis, also a good friend of mine, a classmate of mine in high school, and we were, we were sitting around talking and trying to figure out, like, well, how do we ensure that every kid coming to school buildings, particularly the younger ones, where lead poisoning and other types of things have permanent and the greatest damage that can cause? How do we make, how can we get better guarantees that the water is safe? And after a little bit of investigation, we found that the water coming into school buildings, safe. It's the, it's the components in the water fountains on the end-user end, if you will.
Depending the age.
Depending on the age of them.
Yes.
I believe it's up till 2012, 2014 that those devices were allowed to be built with lead components.
Oh my.
And so that's, I mean, going forward, that's not the case, but we have a lot of old school buildings across Oakland County, so as I was trying to figure out a way to pay for testing our schools, even though it wasn't required, trying to figure out how to do it, the idea was sprung, is why don't we just rip out all the drinking fountains and put the, these water hydration stations, things that you see at the airport and now you see in almost all the schools across Oakland County because of the Oakland County you see in almost all the schools across Oakland County, because of the Oakland County Board of Commissioners.
And that's doable.
Put up the money. We bought the devices. We basically asked the schools, how many do you have? And we were able to honor everyone in the request. And so, we were able to.
That's fantastic.
So, I mean, that, that's just an example of being innovative. And again, happy to report, we heard that this last fall, Detroit and its water problems in schools, they shut, shut down the water fountains, and had to bring in, they're replicating this program. And the governor, in her first budget, is putting up a sizable amount of money to do this statewide. So this is another example about how we're able to be innovative, and really, like, live into our legislative responsibility and public health responsibility as a county.
And everyone benefits.
Everyone benefits.
Yep. Take care of the problem before it becomes a major issue.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's good. You're taking care of the kids.
Yes. It's, yep. I mean, and well, there, I have kids in the schools.
Yep.
I, I mean, all across, I mean, they're our future. And we need to have the best-ready workforce to not only continue to maintain the investment that helps grow an economy, but we also have to have a line to, I mean, an eye to the future, that's looking, like, how do we make sure that the prosperity of Oakland County is accessible to everyone? And it, we build an economy that works for everyone and not just a few.
I like that. Anything else as we're wrapping up?
I mean, I think we, I mean, we covered it. I mean, look, I mean, those are things kind of like we're coming to the end, but we're wrapping up what's happened over the last few months. I mean, looking to the future, I think you can expect, I mean, from the county perspective, and particularly from the board's perspective, we're going to keep focusing on our infrastructure and how we fix roads. We're going to keep focusing on how we protect our water, not only our drinking water, but our, our lakes, rivers, and streams. And we're going to be, I mean, looking for new strategies, and how do we invest in people? Raise wages for working families, pipelines to apprenticeship programs, and really train and grow a workforce that, maybe flip the script on economic development, make it about people, make it about good-paying jobs, so that they can support their families and keep Oakland County the great place it is to live.